Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I hereby call to order the Boston City Council. My name is Matt O'Malley. I am your Council President pro tempore. Today is June 16, 2021. We are live in the Ionella Chamber. Viewers who are watching this may do so by streaming it on YouTube or by visiting Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Certainly, Mr. President. Counselor Arroyo.
Present.
Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Bach.
Present.
Counselor Braden.
Present.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Asabi George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia.
Present.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
And Counselor Wu. Mr. President, we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. For our clergy, I'd actually ask all members in attendance in the chamber to please stand, if you are able. And Counselor Arroyo will introduce our member of the clergy, who will deliver the invocation. Counselor Arroyo, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, unfortunately, we had some technical difficulties, but this week Pastor Thompson is with us. Pastor Thompson and his wife are both the senior pastors at the Jubilee Christian Church since 2014. They're excellent with the community. It's really an honor and a privilege to have them here today to do this. And so we'll have him here today, Pastor Thompson, Matthew Thompson. And so I look forward to this, and I cede the floor to you.
It's an honor to be able to be here before all of you, great men and women of our great city. In 1 Kings, Chapter 3, we see a story of a man by the name of Solomon, who was known to be one of the most wisest men in all of the world. He's the son of King David. And in a dream, the Lord asked Solomon, "Is there anything that you would have or that you would need of me?" And Solomon asked God for wisdom. And so as we prepare to pray and to begin this Boston City Council meeting on June 16, we are asking God for wisdom. So bow your heads and pray in reverence to God with me. Father, on this day, we thank you for your wisdom. May the wisdom of Solomon rest upon us. Father, Solomon asked for wisdom because of the great people that you have given him the opportunity to lead. And so, Father, as these men and women of our community, these men and women of faith, these men and women of great distinction, as they discuss matters that are so challenging in our city, in our region, that represent so many districts in our Commonwealth, Lord, can you give them wisdom? Can you grant to them your wisdom so that they may lead, they may govern, they may serve, and they may follow your wisdom today? And Father, I thank you for blessing every person under the sound of my voice, their individual challenges, struggles, difficulties, adversities that we all face. Although they are leaders, they still need leadership. So, Father, can you lead them? Can you guide them? As they lead our city, can you lead them? Can you strengthen them? And can you be with them this day? Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Thompson, for those inspiring words. Now, we invite Counselor Arroyo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Pastor Thompson. Madam Clerk, would you please amend the attendance report to indicate that Counselor Wu has joined us? Now moving on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the prior meeting. Seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Madam Clerk, would you please lead us with communications from her honor, the mayor, beginning with Docket 0762.
Thank you. Docket 0762, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $30,092,991.30 in the form of a grant for the emergency rental assistance known as ERA II awarded by the United States Department of Treasury to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development. The grant will fund direct financial assistance, including rent, rental arrears, utilities, and home energy costs, utilities and home energy costs in arrears, and other expenses related to housing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0762 shall be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Madam Clerk, would you now please read Docket 0763?
Thank you. Docket 0763, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $75,000 in the form of a grant for the 2021 Summer Jobs Fund awarded by Harvard University to be administered by the Youth Engagement and Employment. The grant will fund summer employment and supportive activities for youth.
Thank you very much. Chair now recognizes Counselor Liz Braden, Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families and Communities. Chair Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families and Communities, I seek to suspend the rules and recommend passage of this document in order that these funds be dispersed to support our youth summer program, summer jobs through YEE. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Counselor Braden, Chair of the Council's Committee on Strong Women, Families and Communities, moves suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0763. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0763, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Aye.
Counselor Bach, aye. Counselor Braden.
Aye.
Counselor Braden, aye. Counsel Campbell.
Counselor Edwards.
Aye.
Counselor Edwards, aye. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes.
Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mejia.
I'm sorry, I was just...
Yes, or I, either.
I was...
This is the $75,000 grant for the youth programs? Yes, thank you. Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, Docket number 0763 has received...
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, would you please read Docets 0764 through 0772?
Thank you. Docket 0764, notice as you see from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of May 19, 2021. Docket 0765, notice as you see from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of May 26, 2021. Docket number 0766, communication was received from the mayor regarding the resignation of the school committee member, Lorna Rivera. Docket number 0767, communication was received from the mayor regarding the resignation of school committee member Alexandra Oliver de Villa. Docket number 0768, notice as you see from the acting mayor of the appointment of Stephanie Everett as a member of the Office of Police Accountability and Transparency, known as OPAT Commission. Docket number 0769, notice as you see from the acting mayor of the appointment of Visemun Germaniz as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission. Docket number 0770, notice as you see from the acting mayor of the appointment of Priscilla Flint Banks as a member of the Boston Employment Commission. Docket number 0771, notice as you see from the acting mayor of the appointment of Joe Cole Burton as a member of the Boston Public Facilities Commission. And Docket number 0772, notice as you see from Dionne Irish of his resignation from the Public Facilities Commission effective May 19, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0764 through 0772 shall be placed on file. Moving right along to reports of committees. Madam Clerk, would you please read Docket 0630, 0651, and 0652 together?
Certainly. Docket 0630, the Committee on Strong Women, Families and Communities, to which is referred on May 5, 2021. Docket number 0630, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $526,120 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Title III E Caregivers Services awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the AID-Strong Commission. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0651, the Committee on Strong Women, Families and Community, to which is referred on May 12, 2021. Docket number 0651, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $936,440.25 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Nutrition Service Incentive Program awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the AID-Strong Commission. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. And Docket number 0652, the Committee on Strong Women, Families and Communities, to which is referred on May 12, 2021. Docket number 0652, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $489,609.24 in the form of a grant for the FY2022 State Allocation, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the AID-Strong Commission. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. While we read and place these three dockets before our body together, we will be voting on them individually. And before we vote, I'd like to invite the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families and Communities, Counsel Braden, for any remarks on these.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will try and keep my comments brief. These matters were sponsored by Mayor Kim Geney and were referred to the Committee on May 5 and May 12. A public hearing was held on Thursday, June 10. Administration representatives included Emily Shea, who is the Commissioner for the AID-Strong Commission, and Frances Thomas, Deputy Commissioner of Administration and Finance at the AID-Strong Commission. They gave the Committee an update on the senior programs in the city of Boston, provided contact information and names of other organizations who partner with the city in supporting our seniors. And the Commission has worked hard throughout this difficult time of the pandemic. The Commissioner Shea added that their goal is to make Boston one of the best places to aid in the country, and I think we can attest to the great work that the AID-Strong Commission are doing. The AID-Strong Commission provides meaningful elder services and opportunities to hundreds of our seniors across the city. These three dockets, as the clerk has already referenced, Docket 0630 and Docket 0650 ought to pass, we recommend that, and Docket 0652 ought to pass in an amended new draft. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Braden. Before we vote, Madam Clerk, would you please update the attendance to recognize that Counsel Andrea Campbell has joined us as well? And Counsel Braden, Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families and Communities, seeks acceptance of the Committee report and passage of Docket 0630. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0630 has passed. Counsel Braden, Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families and Communities, seeks acceptance of the Committee report and passage of Docket 0651. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0651 has passed. And Counsel Braden, Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families and Communities, seeks acceptance of the Committee report and passage in a new draft of Docket 0652. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0652 has passed in a new draft. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action. Madam Clerk, would you please read and place before the body Docket 0372?
27.
I'm sorry, 0327. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Docket 0327, audit for hearing regarding increasing oversight, transparency, and coordination of pilot community benefit offsets.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the Chair of the Council's Committee on Pilot Agreements. Counsel... Chair Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. We had a successful hearing on Monday. I want to thank my co-sponsor, Counsel Braden, and also our Council President and Mayor, Kim Geney, who also filed this with me. Thanks also to colleagues for attending. Counselors Wu, Arroyo, Campbell, Asabi George, Edwards, Mejia, and Flynn were all in attendance. We discussed potential reforms, particularly for the community benefits offsets aspect of the pilot program, and sort of how to move towards a system that coordinates institutions and government and our community members in a way that really serves core community needs, replaces government services, and sort of has more of a democratic co-governance model. The mayor's administration also announced that a task force will be reviewing the pilot program with an initial focus on community benefits, with advocates, community members, and institutions all involved. This is something that the Pilot Action Group, which we also heard from, has advocated for for a long time, so grateful to the... and as have many counselors, so grateful to the administration for that. We did have insightful sort of questions and comments from counselors about timeline, metrics, accountability, how we make sure that this sort of is a meaningful thing. So looking forward to working with all parties involved on that front. And I'll just say briefly that joining us from the administration, we had Chief Starrett, Casey Brock Wilson, Commissioner Arnello, as I mentioned, the Pilot Action Group, the Conference of Boston Teaching Hospitals, Boston CHNA, CHIP Collaborative, ACOM, and then a large number of institutions that submitted commentary. And also, I just want to say a word for... we had a really stellar set of folks from the public offer testimony, and I think got a really 360-degree view of what people hope for in terms of accountability and partnership from our large institutions. So my request, Mr. Chairman, would be that this matter remain in committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Docket 0327 shall remain in the Committee on Pilot Agreements. Madam Clerk, would you please read Docets 0102? Oh, I'm so sorry, Madam Clerk, thank you. Did you want to speak on this matter, Counsel Campbell? No. No, okay.
No.
Okay, all right.
I just wanted to seek reconsideration for Docket 0763, so I can do it at another time.
Nope. Counselor Campbell seeks reconsideration on... I'm sorry, Docket 06...
0763.
0763. Yes. This was the Youth Summer Job Fund. Did you wish to be recorded and voted in the affirmative?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Campbell. Madam Clerk, would you please indicate that Docket 0763 is indeed a unanimous vote, with Counsel Campbell voting in the affirmative? Thank you. Now moving on to Docets 06... excuse me, 0102 and 0103, would you please read those together, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0102, message and order authorizing and approving the city of Boston's Conservation Commission, the CONCOM, to receive property identified by the city of Boston Assessing Department as Zero Rivermore Street in West Roxbury, neighborhood of Boston, with a parcel identification number of 20-09228020, known as the property. The property is currently under the care custody of the Boston Planning and Development Agency, known as BPDA, and is located on the banks of the Cow Island Pond area of the Charles River in West Roxbury. And Docket number 0103, message and order for your approval of the receipt of a preservation restriction agreement on the Aldridge House located at 59 Mount Vernon Street in Boston, Massachusetts 02108, by the Society for the Preservation of New England Antiquities, BBA, doing business as Historic New England.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counsel Michelle Wu, the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Chair Wu, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President pro tempore. We had a very efficient and quick hearing yesterday on a couple different matters, these two, as well as the next one, which I'll later recommend will stay in committee. So I want to thank Counselors Flynn, Braden, and Bach for joining us, as well as a full compliment from the CONCOM, BPDA, DND, and Landmarks to discuss these items. The first one is a parcel transfer from the BPDA over to the Conservation Commission that would complete a permanent conservation of the shoreline along the Charles River across from the city of Boston Archives. One parcel next to it is owned by the Army Corps of Engineers. One parcel on the other side is owned by DCR. And so this would be really just making sure that we are protecting fully the floodplain and allowing for there to be permanent conservation and not development there, so that the water's edge won't keep creeping. The second item is a historic preservation agreement for both the outside as well as the interior of property in Beacon Hill. There were some great points and questions raised about how historic preservation and landmarks really needs more resources behind it, and the city of Boston doesn't have any real enforcement mechanism here, but this is just to codify the agreement between Historic New England and the property owner, which if it did not have the city of Boston's official stamp, it could only last 30 years, plus a renewal every 10 years after that. And so this is really to just ensure that there's permanent preservation recorded on the books and to spare that kind of constant record-keeping and needing to track that. So recommend passage for both of these. Would defer to any other comments by... especially from the district councils representing these areas, but these were both great conversations and important steps for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counsel Wu, seeing no further discussion on Docuts 0102 and 0103, Counsel Michelle Wu is Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, seeks passage of Docket 0102. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0102 is transfer of land and therefore requires...
Thank you.
Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Aye.
Counsel Bach, aye. Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Aye.
Counsel Edwards, aye. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. My pen just ran out of ink. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Aye.
Counsel O'Malley, aye. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, Docket number 0102 passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Wu, Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, seeks passage of Docket 0103. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket 0103, Counselor Arroyo.[1394.33]
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Aye.
Counselor Bach, aye. Counselor Braden.
Aye.
Counselor Braden, aye. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Aye.
Counselor O'Malley, aye. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0103 was passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair now recognizes... Um, excuse me. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0389?
Thank you. Docket 0389, message in order for your approval to declare surplus city-owned former Boston Transportation Department parcels of land and transfer the care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission. The land is located at 18 Hamlet Street, Dorchester, Mass., Wad 7, parcel number 03916000, consisting of approximately 1,450 square feet of vacant land and an unnumbered parcel on Hamlet Street, Dorchester, Mass., Wad 7, parcel number 03894000, consisting of approximately 34,270 square feet of vacant land.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, Counselor Wu. Chair Wu, the floor is yours.
Thank you again. Again, this was part of the same hearing that was held, and we just want a little more time on this one. This parcel is part of three different sites near Uplands Corner that have been the subject of a two-plus-year visioning process with the community, continued and kicked off with Imagine Boston 2030 as well. This particular site is... The city is seeking to put out an RFP that would solicit housing and commercial mixed-use development there, and the committee just is hoping to have a chance for all councilors to take a look at the RFP, particularly to solicit feedback from the district councillor as well. We want to be sure, just to match up, given that our role in the process is to take this one surplus vote, and then we will no longer have a role in the process, to just be clear that all of the community views and what we want to see in that is incorporated into the RFP, because there will not be a formal role for the council at that point afterwards. And we've been part of these conversations before where something goes out and the council takes a vote, and maybe some things weren't quite tied up all the way. So I just want to make sure that everything is in writing, how we are looking forward to that. I received the RFP from the administration very recently, and so I'll make sure that that gets out to everyone for feedback and hope to have this on the agenda soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Docket 0389, per the Chair's suggestion, will remain in the committee. I apologize, I need to look at my screen more. Before I remand that to a committee, the Chair recognizes the district councillor from Dorchester, Counselor Baker. Apologies, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank the Chair of the Committee. I come in here today to ask her to keep it in committee. I was unable to make the hearing yesterday. It's in my district, it's part of a larger plan, so I want a little more of an understanding of what our intentions on this will allow me to do some due diligence here, so I appreciate you leaving it in committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Baker, per the suggestion of the Chair, and the district councillor. Docket 0389 shall remain in the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0773?
Docket 0773, Counsel Mejia offered the following ordinance, creating a commission on black men and boys.
Chair recognizes the... Uh, excuse me, the at-large counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Julia Mejia. Counselor Mejia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm incredibly proud to stand here today to continue the work of our predecessors to create roots for black men and boys in the city, to succeed despite adversity. In 2014, Counselor Jackson filed an ordinance to create a commission on black men and boys. When speaking as to why he was filing this ordinance, he made it plain and simple. He said, "I'm doing it because it's time." That time was seven years ago, and we never got that commission. Since that commission was rejected, black men and boys have continued to face disproportionate impacts of system that was never designed for them to succeed in the first place. A study published in the New York Times found that black boys raised in America, even in the wealthiest families and living in some of the most well-to-do neighborhoods, still earn less in adulthood than white boys with similar backgrounds. In 2019, 28% of black men ages 25 to 29 had a bachelor's degree or higher, compared to 40% of white men and nearly half of white women. In Boston, black men and boys make up a disproportionately number of homicide victims, and a study published in the Washington Post found that Boston had the highest gap in unsolved murders between white and black victims. There is a clear need to pick up the work where Counselor Jackson left off. Our commission on black men and boys maintains the structure as proposed in 2014. The one significant change that our commission has is the ability to hold community forums and dialogues with black men and boys on a variety of subjects, from sexual health to violence prevention, to education, and more. Since 2014, several cities, states, and federal offices have established commissions on black men and boys. Even former President Trump signed a bill into law that created this kind of commission within the United States Commission on Civil Rights Office. The time has come for Boston to finish the work we started seven years ago. We're choosing to file this in advance of Father's Day this Sunday. I look forward to passing this soon, and I would like to thank the amazing black men in our lives who helped make this happen, including Ron Bell, Thaddeus Miles, Conan Harren, and of course, Tito Jackson for their steadfast leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Any further discussion on 0773? Would any councilors wish to add their name as a cosponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn. Please add the Chair, Counselor Wu, and docket 0773 shall be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0774?
Thank you. Docket 0774, Councilors Mejia and Arroyo offer the following ordinance, creating a commission on Latino boys and men.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Julia Mejia. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Arroyo for co-sponsoring this important initiative. As some of you know, we have been on the council... As some of you know, as some of you who have been on the council for some time may remember, Counselor Jackson initially proposed a Black and Men and Boys Commission. Over the course of the working sessions and hearings, it was decided to change the commission to include Latino men and boys as well. When filing these ordinances, we had a choice to make. Do we continue to merge these two distinctive groups together, or do we give them space to advocate and represent their own communities? Ultimately, we chose to create two commissions so that each group may advocate for themselves. What a lot of people in the City of Boston need to know is that there is a lot of tension between the black and Latino communities in our city. This is something that I have experienced personally and have spoken about on the council as an Afro-Latina. During last year's budget vote, shortly after I spoke about why we voted no and the need to stand up for black and brown people in the city, I received a call from a Dominican man who criticized me for claiming my black roots. There is trauma here, and we need to be able to heal in our own space before we're able to heal together. And we also need to acknowledge that black people and Latino people are not a model of... Latino men and boys experience disproportionately impact are not the experience of their black counterparts. For example, at every age, Latinos are less likely than white and black boys to have health insurance coverage, and Latino men have some of the lowest levels of degree attainment, with only 20% receiving their associate's degree. We need both of these commissions operating in our city in order to fully address the needs of those in our community who experience disproportionate impact of a system that was never designed for them to succeed in the first place. I look forward to this conversation, and I am incredibly grateful to Counselor Arroyo for co-sponsoring this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Mejia. The Chair now recognizes the district councillor from Hyde Park, Counselor Arroyo. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, keep my comments brief. Thank you to the leadership of Counselor Mejia to create or to move towards creation of a Latino Young Men and Boys Commission. I am a Latino man, and depending on who you ask, I am a young one. But what I would say specifically to this is Latinos make up 19%, give or take 20% of the City of Boston's population, which makes them 1 in 5 Bostonians. And specifically, what that signifies to me, they've also been responsible for, I think, 89 or 90-something percent of the population growth that Boston has experienced since the 80s. And so what that signifies to me is Boston doesn't just have young Latino men, and women for that matter, and boys as it's present, it's going to continue to have them as a constant part of their future. And so if we're going to try to break through disproportionate impacts of violence, disproportionate impacts of policing, disproportionate impacts of opportunity gaps, it's vital that we give them a shared space to do that. And the reason that I say that is often Latinos are lumped in one way or the other. We see this nationally at a bigger scale where, you know, they're interchangeable, whether you're Mexican or Colombian, and the truth is, that's not true. Caribbean Latinos, Mexican Latinos, Central Americans, South American, we all have different cultures, different experiences, different experiences with race and colorism. And so giving a specific place for them to bring these issues to the bear, to bring issues that they're experiencing in the City of Boston, they make up Latinos the majority of the BPS population, and so of a specific ethnic background. And so this is something where I think this is incredible leadership to ensure that we have a position and a place to ensure that we're raising the... Eliminating barriers and raising the proficiency and the ability for young Latino men and boys to succeed in this city and to truly call Boston home and an equitable home at that. So thank you to Counselor Mejia. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. Any further discussion on docket 0774? Seeing none, would any councilors wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Wu. Please add the Chair's name. And docket 0774 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. I would now like to ask Counselor Nisa Asabi George to take over the podium while I speak on the next docket. Counselor Asabi George.
Madam Clerk, please read docket number 0775.
Thank you. Docket 0775, Counselor O'Malley offered the following ordinance, amending City of Boston Code. Ordinance is Chapter 7, Section 7-2.1 and 7-2.2, Building Energy Reporting and Disclosure, known as BIRD-O.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes President O'Malley. President O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Most of us can remember that time in math class where everything changed. We could no longer simply answer a question, but we had to show our work. For students who struggled with math, it was difficult, but it was important because it demonstrated not only that we knew the answer, but we knew how we needed to get there. When it comes to climate, we know what the answer is. We need to cut our greenhouse gas emissions, and we've made some pretty bold pronouncements through my time on this body. In 2014, we said we were going to cut greenhouse gas emissions by 25% by 2020. We did not make that goal. 50% by 2030, and 80% by 2050. Through great collaborative effort and a really aspirational approach to the work, we've convened the Green Ribbon Commission, the Climate Ready Boston, Carbon Free Boston. This body, I'm proud to say, has done some really effective and important spit work in this space as well. Elected officials, advocates, experts, even some erstwhile critics, all seem to be generally in agreement on what we need to do to address the existential threat that is climate change. We're answering the question correctly, but now it's time for us to show our work. Eight years ago, I stood before this body right around this time as Chair of the Government Operations Committee, as well as Chair of the Environment Committee, urging passage of the Boston Energy Reporting and Disclosure Ordinance, or BIRD-O. It was the result of a lengthy process with this body and former Mayor Thomas M. Menino. Purpose of BIRD-O was simple. We were going to measure and hopefully manage utility usage in buildings that were larger than 35,000 square feet. Despite some vociferous opposition, it passed, and it remains one of the pieces of legislation that I am most proud of. During that time, a funny thing happened. Participation exceeded even our highest expectations. The notion that building owners would actually want to make the efforts to make their buildings more energy-efficient has proven to be true, and it's just not because of altruism. Energy-efficient buildings realize significant utility and management cost savings. Since then, working in concert with so many of you, really with all of you, I'm proud of what has been known as my record on environmental justice, on environmental initiatives. We've led the fight on plastic bag reduce... Reduction, gas leaks, community choice energy, wetlands ordinance, zero waste, curbside composting, textile recycling, net-zero carbon standards for our buildings. But I'm thinking about, as my months on this body come to a close, what really is the most important legacy, the most impactful thing we can do? And it's this: BIRD-O 2.0. I want to begin by thanking so many people. Jessica Morris from my team, who's been my great quarterback. Allison Briesias from the Environmental Department, who's worked tirelessly on this. And most importantly, the advocates, five of whom are sitting behind me, who represent the countless others around the city who's been working on this. Thank you, Ricky Harvey, Andy Krasner, Andy Wells Bean, Duane Tyndall, Sophia Owen, and so many others. Ladies and gentlemen, colleagues, you know what BIRD-O stands for, and I'm keeping the acronym, but I'm changing the definition. This is Boston's Emission Reduction and Disclosure Ordinance. Here's how this ordinance will work. We're going to focus on all of Boston's commercial, residential, and institutional buildings that are 20,000 square feet or larger. Starting in 2025 and following every five years after, we're setting aggressive but achievable metrics for buildings to reach a substantial cut in their greenhouse gas emissions. There will be different classifications and requirements for each building type. For example, we're not going to hold a hospital to the same standard as a self-storage facility, but we will get to zero for all of them. We're going to work with building owners to help them meet their goals. We'll also allow for an alternative compliance that will help fund an account charged with environmental justice and renewable energy infrastructure. This update includes a new review board from the mayor, with approval from council, and most importantly, members of the community will help drive this bus, this electric bus, and lead us. We're offering both carrots and sticks, and we're going to finally create the blueprint or the green print for Boston to become an international leader in greenhouse gas reduction. Keep in mind, when we passed BIRD-O 1.0, very few cities around the country had something similar, and many followed our lead. I had calls from our colleagues in municipal government around the country saying, "How did you do this? How did you deal with opposition from some folks, you know, developers?" And it was about a collaborative effort. This will put us as an international leader. When passed, this ordinance will only impact 3,500 buildings. That accounts for 4% of our building stock. 4%. And in those 4%, those 4% of buildings account for nearly 60% of all building emissions in the City of Boston. This policy would result in an estimated total savings of nearly 37 million metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions in the atmosphere over the next 30 years. When it comes to the existential threat of climate change, once again, we know what to do. We need to cut our greenhouse gas emissions. This ordinance is how we get there. We've talked the right talk, and I don't mean that as a criticism, because we've talked about some really important things and put some really aspirational plans together. This is going to get this done. I have six months left as your colleague, as a member of this body, and perhaps this won't be the only ordinance that I introduce. In fact, there's one coming right after this, but this is something that I really want to be known as our legacy. I've told you all before, and I think, you know, so many colleagues know this, that perhaps the greatest perspective I received came on September 9th of 2020 when I became a parent. And this ordinance is not only important to me as a leader in this city, as a colleague of all of you, but I'm doing this for Margot, and I'm doing this for Benjamin, and Maxine, and Stephen, and Caroline, and Cass, and Blaze, and Aiden, and Alexander, and Patrick, and Michael, and Elizabeth, and Jack, and Douglas, and Charlie, and Kayden, and Samir, and Annalise. We're going to get this done, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there anyone looking to speak on this matter? Counselor O'Malley?
Counselor Flaherty.
I mean, Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you, Madam.
I've got my one shot up here, and I've fouled it up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and obviously thank you for waiving President's rule of no applause, because there's welter of... I want to commend our President and his leadership on this issue. It's... I can attest to, as former Chair of Government Operations, he's been deliberate, he's been strategic, and he's been steadfast battling not one but two administrations to make sure that this happens, and also giving thanks to mothers out front and for their continuous and their passionate advocacy in educating me and also educating this body on the benefits of BIRD-O, and as I mentioned, as the former Chair of Government Operations, and participating and getting to know not only mothers out front but other advocacy groups in our efforts as a city council through Counselor O'Malley's leadership to move our city forward. So I'm excited and ask that my name be added. I'm excited for Counsel President O'Malley. I'm also excited for mothers out front. I'm excited for our city, and as referenced, I'm excited for future generations. So we're going to put Uplands Boston on the map on this front, and so great work to my friend and colleague, and look forward to having this become one in the city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Please add Counselor Flaherty's name. Counselor Bach?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to our President and the filer of this. You know, I think it's a humbling aspect of what we all do, that you just, you know, you make in your moments the contributions you can to moving us in the right direction. And it's so powerful when you have a long enough career on a body like this to stand on your own shoulders like this and be the one who, you know, got something done in the moment that was, as you said, on the cutting edge and is now coming back to say, "Hey, we can do one better." So I just really want to commend the maker and also all the advocates who are here. I mean, ACE, Boston Clean Energy Coalition, I hear all the time from the Green Committee at the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay. We've just got a lot of folks who are sort of tirelessly in the weeds on this, and it's great to see it bear fruit in proposed legislation. I am excited to be supporting that through the process, and I know in my own district have recently seen, actually especially through this winter, some buildings where I had tenants just having crazy costs being passed on to them because of the lack of efficiency of their buildings. So I think recognizing that this is something, we have to do it for the planet, for our community, and there's also often a kind of economic justice aspect of this piece, too. So just again, commend the maker and please, Madam Chair, add my name.
Counselor Bach, thank you. Your name shall be added. Counselor Edwards.
Thank you very much. Message is received loud and clear. He's leaving in six months. This is going to be his signature legislation, and we will get it done as a body. I rarely like to get ahead of that as the Government Ops Chair, but I was so inspired by what you were saying. While unlike most of my colleagues, I don't have any kids, I do have... I do feel that there's a sense of responsibility in looking towards the future for those of us who live in environmental justice communities, and for those of us who look towards the future for what hopefully one day we'll have children to inherit. So I want to thank you for your leadership. Of course, add my name. And again, no pressure, no kids, but I'll... We're going to get this done.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Edwards' name. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, I just wanted to rise to ask for my name be added as well. To... I'm not going to get into all of it. There will be time for that later when we pass this, but just to say thank you to Counselor O'Malley for your partnership on so many issues around climate justice and your leadership long before I joined the council. We love concrete action steps with a hard deadline. That's what is... Will be codified in this legislation, and that's what we're going to be doing on the council as well. So very grateful and looking forward to supporting this every step of the way.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Please add Counselor Wu's name. Anyone else like to be added? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia. Madam Clerk, please add my name. Docket number 0775 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations.
Thank you very much, Counselor Asabi George. Moving on now to... Sorry, Madam Clerk, I want to make sure I have the...
0776.
Madam Clerk, would you please place before the body... Oh, actually, I'm sorry, this is mine now. So I'm going to call Counselor Flynn up. So those who are wondering what's happening is that I, you know, I'm technically the council vice president, so when the acting mayor was council president, she'd call me up, with me being now President Protam or Acting President. It's within our rules that we can call on any councillor to sort of take the podium. So now that we're doing that, I'm going to obviously go around, and everyone will get a turn. So now, please, Counselor Flynn is going to take over for this one.
Thank you. Look at him.
Madam Clerk, please read docket 0776.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Docket 0776, Councilors O'Malley and Flaherty offer the following petition for a special law regarding an act to restore Boston's governmentally-involved housing protections.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes President O'Malley. President O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I seek to suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Kenzie Bach as a regional co-sponsor.
Seeing no objection?
Perfect. Thank you. This past Saturday, I participated in a rally at the Forbes Building in Jamaica Plain. This is a very special senior building in my district. I remarked then that my last event before the 2010 election where I was elected to this was a pizza party with my dear colleagues and friends at the Forbes Building. It's a wonderful place. It's just a vibrant, diverse, terrific community, and many of the residents are, they're on a very, very fixed income, and there's some very deeply affordable units that have been protected but are really at risk of expiring, expiring use. There's 147 apartments total that are currently affordable to low-income and disabled tenants, and these are really run, the risk is real that they could be converted into market rate, which would put tenants, many of whom are senior citizens or older Bostonians, displaced and homeless. And it's part of a larger issue. There's actually 30,000-plus privately owned subsidized apartments, and 2,000 of those have been turned into high-market rents over the last couple of years. There are nearly 1,000 Boston apartments that are at risk of conversion to market rates by 2022, including the Forbes Building. So what this HRP will do, this Home War petition will do, will offer protections for low-income individuals and families living in government-involved housing or formerly government-involved housing that are threatened with displacement as a result of prepayment of mortgage financing, loss of use of restrictions, expiring subsidy contracts, as well as expected increases in rent. This is not the first time that this HRP has passed this body. In fact, I believe it's been a number of times and always unanimously, and my co-sponsor, Counselor Flaherty, has been a great leader in this, so I appreciate once again his partnership on this. But at the minimum, what this will do will encourage owners to accept incentives, including the city-funded vouchers and other housing opportunities for these folks. It's kind. It's the right thing to do. We're not talking about completely upending the cart. We're simply saying to these building owners not to be selfish, not to displace individuals, particularly our older Bostonians and our most vulnerable populations, but we want to make sure that we can protect them. So we are somewhat limited by what we can do, although I know that Sheila Dillon spoke at the, or excuse me, Sheila didn't come, but she's been speaking to the developer, and so many of you have been so supportive of this initiative as well. We're going to do everything we can to not only protect residents in the Forbes Buildings but at the other buildings throughout the city of Boston, hoping that we can, we're not going to suspend and pass. The chair has agreed to, the chair of this, where this will likely go, has agreed to have an expedited hearing, but we want to get this on the books and get this up to the state legislature and then use all of our leverage of our respective reps and senators. And I can tell you, Rep. Mika Alagardo has already agreed to lead this at the state legislature, but we want to get this done. So thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to my dear colleague, Counselor Flaherty and Counselor Bach for their steadfast support here as well. And thank you to Counselor Wu, who came to the rally and spoke as well on Saturday. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. The chair now recognizes the second co-sponsor, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To just add earlier comments, I was asked on behalf of our housing advocates and national alliance of HUD tenants to join Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Bach, and I'm sure the rest of our colleagues here to refile this. This is something that I've done in the past. This is a home war petition, which again is not new to this body. It's enjoyed unanimous support from previous bodies. And in sum, it's a home war petition that would allow Boston to preserve and restore at-risk, affordable housing at no cost to the city. I've been a longtime supporter of expiring use properties as I know them and allowing the tenants and the tenants' organizations and associations to renegotiate those leases as those terms expire. And it's space that our colleague, Counselor Lydia Edwards, knows as well. So this particular proposal applies to current and formerly HUD subsidized housing with, again, expiring use restrictions, which according to the mayor's housing report includes over 3,000, closer to probably 5,000, as Counselor O'Malley has described across the city. So this proposal would help maintain affordable units in the city and discourage condo conversion of these homes, which often cause displacement to some of our most vulnerable populations as referenced, the Forbes Building. I was proud to join with those residents, particularly this past weekend in Jamaica Plain, and will continue to work hard to preserve expiring use of affordable housing in our city. So look forward to this moving up to Beacon Hill as quickly as possible. Encourage my colleagues to join in as well and try to help not only the folks over at the Forbes Building, which is one of our more vulnerable populations in JP, but to help all tenants of expiring use as they're looking at the clock, as they're looking at their calendar. There'll be another building next month or next year. There may be a whole series of buildings in the next several years, and so by negotiating or encouraging the landlord to negotiate with the tenants, it's the tone, obviously, that we need to continue to set, particularly as we come out from this pandemic. But I think in this particular instance, we have an owner that's been being a little cute, putting the swerve on the city and working closely, obviously, as a council with D and D and the mayor's office. Hopefully, we can bring some sense to those negotiations but also to support the tenants, the residents. That's their home. That's their community, and we have an obligation as their city council to fight for them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. The chair now recognizes the third co-sponsor, Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Counselor O'Malley and Counselor Flaherty for letting me join and to the chair, Counselor Edwards, for the promise of an expedited hearing. You know, I, before I was here, worked at the Housing Authority, and we used to chase these expiring use properties. And, I mean, there really is nothing more demoralizing in this moment where we need to add affordable units in the city of Boston than to think that we're going to lose them and often lose them in considerable volume in sizable buildings. And if Counselor Braden will forgive me for mentioning her district, when I was at the BHA, you know, we were working on Babcock Towers, which is one of the ones named here. And I think it's important to name that in communities like that, it wasn't just that we were talking about a whole bunch of affordable units in one go that were at risk. It was also, you know, a whole Russian-speaking elder community that is the language community that sustains people, that if you broke it up, you know, because the backup plan, right, was, oh, well, I guess we'll figure out how to get these folks covered with vouchers in the BHA portfolio. But giving people vouchers and putting them across the city is never going to replace an organic language community like that that's completely central to people's sense of place. So I just think that each time these come up, it becomes totally urgent, and the reality is, is that the city, you know, the BHA, D and D, counselors, mayor's office, I think every time gets together to try to throw the kitchen sink at the thing and get, and get the owners to see the light that they really want to extend these covenants. But it's too close too many times, and we're using resources that we need to expand affordable housing overall. So, you know, I just think that every lever we can give ourselves to help resolve these situations in ways that keep our families intact are critical. So I'm very proud to be a co-sponsor, and thank you so much again to the makers.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Bach. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? Counselor Edwards.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to acknowledge the reason why we're doing an expedited hearing and we're in the middle of budget is because of the emergency, of the urgency of this moment and that the building itself is under sale. So we need to move this and get the home war petition up to the State House. So I wanted to acknowledge my colleagues who have things waiting, government ops who want to get those done as well. I also wanted to acknowledge that I've been in this situation with the Mercantile in the North End. It is one of the few buildings that are actually family-oriented and affordable in the North End and downtown, and we were going to lose it all because of the same exact reason. It was an expiring use, 13A building, and the new owners had no intention of keeping anyone in those buildings. Thank goodness to the efforts of the BHA, of Sheila Dillon, and because of the fact that the BHA pushed for an increase in vouchers, we were able to go back to that new owner and say, you're getting more money by keeping people here. And what is painful to me to see that even with the more money analysis, this new owner is still wanting to move them out. And so that's why there's a sense of urgency, and we've got to get this up to the State House to help preserve, to help slow down, and to make sure that when it comes to expiring use, when people create community by living there with their families, by having working-class families being able to live downtown, which is becoming almost nonexistent, to be very frank, in downtown to have that, it is worth the fight. And I just want to thank you, the makers for this, all three of the co-sponsors, and I look forward to getting this up as soon as possible.
Counselor Edwards, would you like to add your name?
Yes, please.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Edwards' name. The chair recognizes Counselor Braden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to find the co-sponsors of this really important piece, this initiative. I want to reference the fact that, you know, in the last, in the next decade, we're possibly going to lose 3,000 units to be considered at high risk of conversion from, due through expiring use. And in Alston Brighton, as Counselor Bach has already referenced, we have expiring use properties at Warren Hall and Reservoir Towers, and I understand that we actually haven't been able to preserve the housing for this Russian-speaking community at Babcock Towers, that that is going to go away. And this is a huge loss and a huge impact on our low-income and most vulnerable communities in our city. So I really want to stand in support of this special law and hope that we can execute it as fast as possible and to try and preserve as many of these units as possible. The notion that preserving expiring use should be pushed away to, just through avarice and a profit motive is very disturbing to me when we have so many people who rely on these affordable units. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, would you like to add your name?
Yes, please.
Would anyone else like to add their name? Show of hands. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Wu, and please add the name of the chair. Docket 0776 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. This is like Jeopardy. They have all the guest hosts auditioning. Thank you, Eddie. Excuse me. Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0777?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0777, counselors Braden and, excuse me, and Asabi George offer the following resolution recognizing World Refugee Day on June 20.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the district council from Alston Brighton. Counselor Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am pleased to file this resolution recognizing this Sunday, June, next Sunday, June 20, as World Refugee Day in our, in our city. World Refugee Day was held, has held, was held globally for the first time on June 20, 2021, 2001, in commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the convention relating to the status of refugees. The day continues to be an occasion to build empathy and understanding for the plight of refugees and recognize their resilience in rebuilding their lives, as well as the rights of refugees must be afforded, including the right not to be expelled, the right not to be punished for seeking asylum, the right to work, the right to housing, the right to education, the right to public relief and assistance, the right to freedom of religion, the right to access to the courts, the right to freedom of movement, and the right to be issued identity and travel documents. The pandemic has left few lives in place untouched, yet its impact has been harshest on those that are in vulnerable situations of crisis, such as refugees, migrants, asylum seekers, and displaced persons. Our city and Commonwealth have played a critical role in resettling and welcoming refugees from all over the world within our communities, and we must continue to reaffirm our commitment in addressing and accommodating the concerns, needs, and rights of our immigrant refugees and refugee communities. I pondered this recently. We think about refugees coming in from overseas, from desperate situations. We also have the situation of internally displaced peoples in other countries, but we also have the history of internally displaced peoples in this country in the mass migration from the South. Folks migrated north to find safety. So, and also the fact, the people who are turned up on this, on the shores of this country, many of them from the very early start of this, of this nation, were refugees from religious persecution. So I think this is part of our national story, and I'm very proud to recognize Refugee Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Braden. The chair recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Nisa Asabi George. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Braden for including me in this resolution. My grandmother, at the age of 14, was taken from Poland, from her home, from her family, to work in a labor camp in Germany. My grandfather was a member of the Polish Army and held in a prisoner-of-war camp. They eventually met in a displaced persons camp in Germany where my mother was born and eventually came to the United States as post-war refugees. And that happened while my mother was very young, and certainly this is only part of their story. Refugees were people in communities with families, with jobs, with lives. Then war and violence tore them apart. All of their identities become compressed under the label refugee because too often we make inhumane policy choices, letting our differences painfully divide us, and geopolitics beat back our better angels. Whether they flee destabilized governments in societies like in Gaza, Guatemala, and Syria, or the violence against their gender or sexuality, or the devastating impacts of climate change, refugees are people desperately searching for safety and stability. I hope that today and every day, Boston is seen as a beacon to immigrants and refugees. We have many great organizations in Boston that help refugees settle here, including the Jewish Vocational Services of Boston, Boston Immigrant Justice Network, Massachusetts Immigrant and Refugee Advocacy Coalition, Catholic Charities, Boston Center for Refugee Health and Human Rights, and Refugees Welcome at UMass Boston. These organizations and many others work tirelessly to support our newest Bostonians. As a city, we can do more to ease their transition and to build a better world, a better life, that ends the violence and conflicts forcing people to flee their homes in the first place. Particularly during this pandemic, this day gives us an opportunity to seriously consider the hardship and the danger that would lead to people becoming refugees. It gives us an opportunity to remember why we are a sanctuary city and how deeply Boston is strengthened by not just its immigrants and refugees, but by all of us doing this together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Further discussion on docket 0777? Seeing none. Any counselors wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add. Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Wu. Please add the chair's name. And counselors Braden and Asabi George seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0777? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0777 has passed. Congratulations, counselors Braden and Asabi George. Moving right along to the personnel orders. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0778?
Thank you. Docket 0778, Counselor O'Malley for Counselor Braden.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0778. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. 0778 has passed.
Docket 0779, Counselor O'Malley for Counselor Campbell.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0779. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Docket 0779 has passed. Before we get to 780, again, this says, reads in your packets, I'm offering it for District 7. This is from the acting mayor in her capacity as the District 7 counselor. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you. Docket 0780, Counselor O'Malley for District 7.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0780. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0780 has passed. Now moving on to late files, I'm informed by Clerk Feeney that there is one late-file matter. The late-file matter is a resolution sponsored by Counselor Mejia. Do we have copies before us, Counselor Mejia?
We do.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, City Messenger Ron Cobb. We have to take a roll call vote to add this item to the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on adding this late-file resolution before us?
Thank you, Mr. President. On late-file matter from, excuse me, from Counselor Mejia, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Aye.
Counselor Bach, aye. Counselor Braden.
Aye.
Counselor Braden, aye. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu. Mr. President, the late-file matter is properly before the body.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you read the first and last, first clause and last clause before Counselor Mejia speaks on it?
Thank you. Offered by City Councilor Julia Mejia in the, in city council, a resolution recognizing June 16, 2021, as International Domestic Workers' Day, whereas every day domestic workers care for the elderly, assist people with disabilities, clean homes, and nurture children, thus freeing up the time and attention of millions of other workers and families. Whereas government must act powerfully to protect domestic workers from violence and to protect domestic workers from violence and abuse, including educating and holding accountable domestic employees to compliance with the law, regulating intermediaries that recruit and facilitate employment. Now therefore be it resolved that the Boston City Council recognizes June 16th, 2021, as Irving Golson Community Health Day in the city of Boston. And Boston City Council honors the contribution of nannies, house cleaners, care workers, and other domestic workers whose work holds up Boston communities and households, filed in City Council on June 16th, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Counsel Mejia, the floor is yours.
Yes, and I just want to note for the record that there is a typo.
Okay.
It's supposed to be, to recognize June 16th, 2021, as Domestic Workers' Day in the city of Boston.
Okay. Thank you. Duly noted. Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing us to file this late-file matter, which I'm proud to say is the first time we've ever done so. And that speaks to how important this issue is to our office and to the people across the city of Boston to honor domestic workers on this day. For most of my childhood, my mother was a domestic worker cleaning offices across the city. I would eventually join her in that work, spending nights and weekends working alongside her. It's hard work and work that is too often taken for granted. The city of Boston is home to thousands of caretakers, nurturers, cleaners, laborers, and so many more. These are workers who are often unseen, unheard, both in our community and in our policies. For example, domestic workers are excluded from the Fair Labor Standards Act in the early 1900s. That is why we, as a council, need to work hard, not just on International Domestic Workers' Day, but every day to ensure that all workers in the city are included and protected. I ask that we suspend the rules in the passage of this resolution.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. The Chair recognizes the District Counsel from East Boston. Counselor Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. I rise today not only as the Chair from East Boston, but as the former chairwoman of the statewide coalition for the Massachusetts Coalition for Domestic Workers, where we successfully passed statewide law creating the Domestic Worker Bill of Rights, protecting the 63,000 domestic workers in the state of Massachusetts. I want to give credit to Counsel Wu, actually, when I was just an activist and organizer. Counsel Wu, I think you were, in your first term, actually produced a resolution in support of the Domestic Worker Bill of Rights that was pending before the State House at the time. I want to give credit because it was a grassroots organization that was multilingual and immigrant-led. And I was blessed to be part of the Worker Center, the Brazilian Immigrant Center at the time, now the Brazilian Worker Center, which is one of the lead organizations. It was also led with Matahari and the Brazilian Women's Center, the Dominican Development Center. Today, it also includes the Jewish Labor Committee as well. But at the time, we had no idea what we would do together. We had also no money. And to be very frank, it was all women of color and many of them from immigrant backgrounds that helped to lead this. I think we actually brought them here to acknowledge that. On June 26th is the anniversary of when the State House actually passed the Domestic Worker Bill of Rights. And what does it do? Well, for one thing, it gives us more rights than even the UN Convention on Domestic Work. We, as domestic workers in Massachusetts, have the right to a written contract. No other worker has it unless they're really in a union. We also have the right to be recognized and seen at the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination. That was hard fought for. Their jurisdiction right now is for employers that have six employees or more, right? And then also, there was an outright exclusion completely of domestic workers, because it wasn't considered real work by this state. We get to organize, and now we're one of the few people who, again, can go to the MCAD, because most nannies don't work with six other people. All of that, we did together organically. And the best part was the hearing that we had at the State House, where we had the first panel of domestic workers and more than one language speak about their reality. The second panel was all employers, mostly women, doctors, lawyers, professional women, who honestly had to admit, they can't go to work unless domestic workers come to work. Part of the organizing effort that is nationwide is that this is the work that makes all of the work possible. This is the work you lead with your heart. Oftentimes, you're there when your client is born, and you're also there when your client transitions and dies. I've had domestic workers, and I've started a legal clinic, the first in the state, to represent them for free. I represented nannies, house cleaners, care workers. And one of the saddest things I saw was that they led with their heart, oftentimes to the detriment of themselves financially, because they were the only defense that senior had to stay in her home, because the children or the relatives no longer wanted to take care of her. So she would work for free. It is that combination of multi-levels of oppression that, as noted in this resolution, but also historically, we need to be reminded, we excluded domestic workers from the New Deal. We excluded them and farmworkers, both at the time, in the 1930s, predominantly black, because the South would not sign on to the New Deal if it gave rights to those two populations. And it took until 2014 in this state, and through the organizing efforts of immigrant women, because domestic work has always been the work of immigrant women and working-class women, whether they're Irish, Vietnamese, as you know today. It has become that work. It's what you can do. And I know, I literally know, an astrophysicist who cleans toilets here because her degrees aren't recognized. I say all this because it's important to recognize the work that got this work done. Again, the Domestic Worker Bill of Rights was passed in 2014, and we got 99% of what we wanted on the first try. We introduced it, and it was passed. We have the right to written contract. We are protected from discrimination. We have the right to receive a list of all of our rights in our native languages. We have so many more things to do, and it's the work that's unseen and oftentimes unprotected. So thank you, Counsel Mejia, for reminding us to see this work, to celebrate this work, and to continue. And I just wanted not only to add my name, but to recognize, again, those organizations that were there with very little money, but got it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards, for your remarks. And more importantly, thank you for your great work in this space as well. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Lydia Edwards as a cosponsor. Any further discussion on this docket? Madam Clerk, please also add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bock, Counsel Braden, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Wu, and the Chair as cosponsors. And Counsel Mejia seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of this late-file resolution. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Congratulations, Counsel Mejia. Moving right along to green sheets. Do any councilors wish to remove a matter from the green sheets? They may do so at this time. Seeing no takers. We're now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are zero additions to the consent agenda. Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda has been adopted. Moving right along for announcements. Do any councilors have any announcements to share? The Chair recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Nisa Asabi George. The floor is yours.
I'll just do a very quick one, Mr. President. And as you mentioned earlier, the names of all of our children, I'd just like to wish you, all the dads on the City Council, a very happy Father's Day. And I hope you have a good brunch, or a sleep-in, or whatever it is that you'd like to do on Father's Day happen for you, because I'm certain that for your wives, you did the same for them on Mother's Day. So, happy Father's Day, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Asabi George. The Chair recognizes the District Counsel from Hyde Park. Counsel Arroyo, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to extend an invitation and a heads-up that there's an event this weekend, Juneteenth, at the Martini Half Shell in Hyde Park that's being sponsored by my office, Counsel Mejia's office, and Representative Consavo's office. Congresswoman Yana Pressley will be speaking. Mayor Janey will be speaking. And it should be a pretty large event. And I'm looking forward to it as the first sort of major event in Hyde Park, where they'll be in person. So a lot of the community will be seeing each other for the first time. So just so folks are aware, if you're an at-large counsel, if you're a district counsel and you'd like to come in, please do. It's at 11:50 a.m. off Truman Highway at the Martini Half Shell in Hyde Park.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. Seeing no further announcements, I'm going to bend the rules. And I don't know if Juan Lopez is around, but if Juan Lopez could join us in the chamber. Is he? Hopefully, he's coming. Jelated, he's nodding. You know, one of the beauties of having a small body like ours, we get to know each other's families well. Get in here, Juan. And Juan's niece, Kenya Seone Lopez, was recently nominated to be a federal judge of the Superior Court of the District of Columbia by President Biden. And I know how proud he is, as we all are, of you and your family. And I don't know her, but she's a day street denizen originally, grew up in Hyde Square, and we're just so proud of you, Juan, and your family. So congratulations. Okay. Seeing no further announcements, I'd actually like to ask all councilors and those in the chamber to please stand as we adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. Did you?
Can I just? I'm so sorry.
Yes, the Chair recognizes the District Counsel. You may be seated. The Chair recognizes the District Counsel from Beacon Hill. Counsel Bock, the floor is yours.
Sorry. I would be remiss not to say that one of the names that we are rising in memorial of today is Teresa Parks. It's really, it's a hard week for the Mission Hill community. Last week, I came to you and mentioned the name of Adeline Stallings, who had really anchored the Mission Main community, and frankly, had been the force behind its redevelopment. And I think just later that day, we lost Teresa, who was the force behind the Roxbury tenants of Harvard Mission Park development. Teresa, you know, and a small group of fellow neighbors stood in front of bulldozers when Harvard intended to knock down a whole neighborhood, a whole working-class neighborhood, and turn it into an extension of the hospital campus. And, you know, usually in tenant movements, we count it as a success if we stop the bulldozers. Teresa and her husband Roberts, who's already passed on, and their kind of whole alliance of folks, along with actually a number of Harvard students, actually got Harvard to eventually cede the land altogether and enable the creation of an 1,000-unit affordable housing community, Mission Park, that endures to this day. That is really the concentration of, the deepest concentration of affordable housing in my district. And Teresa just continued to preside over it, to take immense interest in the community, to be a real force in Mission Hill. I felt really honored to meet her when I became a candidate for this office and to just see her all the time at every community event. And so it's, I think it's very hard for the Mission Hill community to lose her. It's hard for the Mission Hill community to lose her in a context in which so many people haven't gotten to see her recently because of COVID. And there will be a week for her today, four to seven, out at Gormly Funeral Home. And then tomorrow morning, there'll be a funeral starting there at 8:30, and then a mass at the Mission Church,